This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the Easthampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, May 17th. The meeting tonight... The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Chatter Channel Y93 and live streaming on their webpage easthamptonmedia.org. Councilors participating in this meeting are gathering hybrid on their order extended until March 2025, which allow us to do so. I remind both, the member of the city council and the public participating remote, remain mute until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the member of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of this meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara?
Connie Denham here. Salem Derby?
President.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kuzinski?
Here.
Dave Munier?
Tom Peak?
Here.
Brad Riley?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Owens here.
President.
Please stand up for the place of the delegate. The place of the delegate stands in the flag of the United States of America and in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like, councilors can see, and the part of the public can see through Easthampton Media, we have Easthampton with the people group. Welcome to the city council chambers. First, I want to recognize Ms. Brown. You're doing an amazing job. Thank you. We are glad, we are really happy that we have you in Easthampton School System. What you've been doing for the past years is incredible. As a coach, that I used to coach high school softball, it's different, different, different thing, right? It's a sport. This is something more intellectual. You're doing an amazing job. It's not easy to win every year, and it's almost impossible to win every year states. So you're doing a fantastic job. I just want to congratulate you in front of everybody because you deserve all the credit.
Here, here.
Tonight, we're going to recognize the students, the teachers, and the mentors. We invite Senator Velez, and we invite State Rep. Kerry, that I hope he show up soon. I'm trying to, yes, I'm trying to delay it so that way he show up. But I, again, I just want to give the opportunity, because I want to wait for State Rep. Kerry. If any councilor wants to say something, until we wait for the State Rep., now is the time to say something to the, with the people. Anyone? Please. We need the State Rep. here. Counselor Rist?
During a time of some negative publicity, you, all of you, are a positive light for Easthampton. And it has been that way for many years because of a wonderful teacher you have. But it's you, the students, that have made Easthampton a place that people want to send their kids to school. Because, obviously, you learn. And you know, we see the future leaders right in front of us. So thank you all.
Any other councilor? Counselor Sarit?
Just to piggyback off of that, when we look at everything that's going on abroad and locally, you wish that you get better behavior out of your adults and leaders. And then I look at the accomplishments that you have achieved and these teams have achieved before us, before you. And I think about the hope that that gives me for our next generation of leaders. You're already leaders. But once you turn 18 and you can vote, then you're really, really leaders. So I just want to thank you for all the inspiration you give me every day. Whenever I check on the news or social media and see what you've accomplished as We the People, it's really inspiring. And thank you so much.
Counselor?
Yeah, so exactly what the two counselors just said. I also just want to say, you know, I've been following the work that you all do for many years now. And somebody who has such a passion for public administration and governance, to see the level of accomplishment that you all have at the ages that you're at right now, it just, it, it fills me with so many ideas of where you all will end up. I started this process of, you know, learning about the government and, you know, trying to be a political leader, just within the last five years. So I think that the level that you're at now, by the time you get to be my age, there's no doubt, if you wanted to, you could be, you know, working for the United Nations. You could be senators. You could be any kind of thing that you want to be. I just know that you all have it in you. And I want to extend the offer to you that when you graduate from college and there are areas within the government that you want to work, reach out to me. I will help you get connected to the people that you need to get connected to and to actualize your dreams. Because I believe in the work that you all have done. And I feel like there is a positive outcome for our government when there are people like you at your age who are as involved as you are. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselor?
Yeah, I would just say, not just this year, but really the last few years in Easthampton, but I think really in a lot of small communities in America, you know, like times have been tough and we've needed a win. And it's been really interesting to me. I'm not, I grew up a few towns over. And I had never, until I moved here, I'd never heard of We the People. And to see the way that people in this community who do not broadly agree with one another on anything come together to get excited over this team's just consistent, like statistically borderline impossible domination in the statewide, at the statewide level. It is really exciting. I live on Holyoke Street. So every time that the police and the fire and the buses all come down, I'm often out with my dog when that happens. And you've got neighbors all coming out excited and waving and what. And like, I just think, like, a community, particularly a smaller community like this, like, needs that kind of thing. They need, they need wins sometimes, that, you know, things to get excited about. And you've once again provided that. And it's almost crazy how little doubt I have that you'll probably provide that next year too because you've just been so unbelievable at this. So thank you for being that for us and for everything you've done. And I'll just say what everyone else is. I have absolutely no doubt that you'll all go on to do just totally incredible things. So thanks, thanks, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Derby?
I see that Dan Kerry is here, so I'll make mine brief. For me, you know, I, this is special because I've known so many of you for so long. And I want to just point out that, as you can see, we're not spring chickens, really. Tom's kind of springish.
He is, so.
And, you know, honestly, when I started, I had just turned 30. And, you know, that probably seems like a long way off for you guys, but it's generally pretty young. And I would love to see us entice you back to Easthampton. And to not have the brain drain that happens when we have really talented, intelligent people that go to the cities and, you know, they stay. I would love to see you come back to Easthampton. I would love to see you get involved. Because we can't afford the brain drain. We need you guys back. And go travel the world and have an amazing time and, like, have a great experience living. This isn't a bad place to settle, so just remember that. And we appreciate that, and we're about to show that, so. Thank you. Thanks.
Any other Counselor? Counselor Kuzinski, and then you.
I just would like to add a few words. I'll be brief, Representative and Senator. When you go around the world and places, yes, we'd love to see you come back. But wherever you go, please remember to take that bit of Easthampton with you. I'm getting goosebumps just saying that. Please, take it with you and remember where you came from. Remember every person you've met and worked with. Because that's what this is really all about. That's what democracy is about. It's about representing We the People. Thank you.
Counselor Denham?
I agree with what everything that everyone said. And I applaud all of you. And I just want to say something specific to the women who are in the room. As the only woman who is up here, I want you to know that there's a place for you in leadership. And you should remember that always.
Thank you. State Senator and State Rep., you want to say something before we call by names? We'll give you a couple minutes.
I'll be brief.
That's impossible.
I've heard that before.
That's what I said, a couple minutes.
There's your first lesson. Never start a speech with "I'll be brief." People will be looking at their watches the whole time. Speaking of time, I apologize I was late. I was at the State House all day long. I left a couple minutes early, got out of Boston traffic, smooth sailing, and then I hit Cottage Street. We've met a few times now, so I really can be brief. Really proud of all of you. Really, really proud of the hard work you put in. Going to represent Massachusetts is a big deal. That's why we're doing this. That's why we're taking the time. So I want to make sure that you hear us. And let me piggyback off all of my colleagues. Great to see you all. I've been at that table, and I've been in those seats. Very proud Easthampton High School graduate, school committee member, city council member, State Rep. So everything you just heard is exactly, exactly true. You can go, you can come back. It'll always be Easthampton. We'll always be proud of you. So congratulations and thank you for your hard work and your great representation. State Senator John Velez, that was brief, right?
That was, that was good.
Briefest I've ever heard this guy.
So I got to be honest with you all. It is like, well, the last time, I've been in your class like the representative a bunch. And I have to tell you, it's, it's the, whatever I'm doing that day, whatever else I'm doing that day, it is truly the highlight of my day. The last time I was there, Ms. Brown pulled me aside and said, "Hey, a group of the students have some questions for you about foreign affairs, and they're going to tie it to preparation." And the question that was posed to me, which I don't remember anymore, was about some experience that I had overseas and how it pertains to what you were doing. And I remember thinking, literally, the rest of the day and for a long time after that, the fact that I had that question posed to me by a group of high school students was fascinating to me. And I think it's just a testament to what you folks do. I mean, I always say this, when I leave your class, the conversations we have, you don't see those questions and answers in a law school today. You don't. Take it from us. We're both law school graduates. You don't have those questions. And that level of debate, the being able to cite questions. I remember when you were at the State House, what, a few weeks ago? And we, I asked a quote, and I don't know, who was the, who was that, remember if we were in the Senate chamber? I knew, I knew it was you. And I asked a question, and I said, "What Supreme Court Justice..." Before I even said, "said this," you raised your hand and you had the answer. And I made a vow, like, "I'm never asking you all a question again." Just not going to do that. You know, we talk a lot about Massachusetts with all of our professional sports teams being like title town. They're always winning championships. Not as much true anymore. But I got a pretty sure shot bet that each and every year, when you folks go down to states, I don't want to jinx you, but it's pretty remarkable, the track record that you folks have. And it's special. So keep it up. Like everything said, like our friends in government said in the council, like Representative Kerry said, you know, "Take a piece of Easthampton with you." But go, go do stuff special because you're all special. And what the, what you've learned thus far, how you're able to analyze, how you're able to, again, be analytical, the way you're able to articulate that. And I think most importantly, how you're able to audible when you get a question, some of those question and answer sessions that we did, when we throw a little curveball at you, the way you're able to pause, audible, and respond, it's remarkable. So I don't know what you're all going to do, but I know that you're going to set this world on fire. And it's going to be really, really special to watch. So congratulations again, and I look forward to being here next year when you folks win the state championship again. So congratulations.
Thank you, State Rep. Good to see you both. So we're going to call the names.
I'm going to try.
If, State Rep., you just want to be here in front of it?
Sure.
So I will be here, and the Vice President will call the names. Me, whoever you guys want.
Sounds good. Yes. Dear Batia. Nice job, dear. Congratulations. Liliana Cohen.
And of course, we're going to applaud, but at the end.
Salem, can I just interrupt?
Yep.
Congratulations. Just so everybody knows what we're doing up here.
Yes.
Everybody's getting from me a citation from the Massachusetts House of Representatives. And they say, "Be it hereby known to all, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to each person's name in recognition of placing first in the Massachusetts We the People competition. The entire House membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Signed by the Speaker of the House, Ron Mariano, and myself." So I'm just going to read one. They all say the same thing with different names. But I want to make sure everybody, the friends and family, folks at home, everybody knows what we're up to here.
Senator?
I'm going to do the exact same thing. Thank you for the flag. So same thing, but obviously a different chamber. The State Senate, an official citation. "Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to the name in recognition of winning the Massachusetts State Championship for We the People, the citizen, and constitution, academic constitution..." Competition, rather. "...and be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success in this citation duly be signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. And this is signed by the President of the Senate, Karen Spilka, attested to by the Clerk of the Senate, Michael Hurley, and then offered by..."
And I'll read ours too, which is, "The Easthampton City Council does hereby recognize and congratulate for your participation as a member of the Easthampton High School We the People Constitutional History Team, which won the state championship and placed 13th out of 48 teams at the national championships held in Washington DC April 22nd, 2023, and signed by our President, Omar Gomez."
Thank you.
We forgot you there because the State Rep. was late.
We talked for too long.
Can you just emphasize that again?
All right, Summer Collins.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Dylan Damon. Congratulations. Congratulations. Landon Ellsworth. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Gianna Esteras. Not here. Okay. Rosemary Falay. Rosie. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Congratulations. Anastasia Gahauski. Congratulations. Congratulations. Nathan Cruiser. Hopefully I said that right.
You got it.
All right.
Congratulations. 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 And Maura Larson. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Alex Major. Is that an easy one? Congratulations. Congratulations. Caitlin Martin. Congratulations. Valerie Martin. Congratulations. Riya Patel. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. And Claudia Rivera. Congratulations. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Gianni Susi. Congratulations. 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 Ava Stewart. Congratulations. 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 Isabella Wood. Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Abigail Dean. Not here. Jonathan Gallagher. Emma Jinter.
These are the mentors now, so that's okay. You've got the class. They also have for the mentors. It's okay.
Yes.
I was going to say, because I was going to blame them.
Where'd you get this list from?
They have one from last year. A firm handshake will do.
They deserve to be recognized.
You still have yours last year?
Our collective blood pressure.
Brayden Lynn. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thanks for coming back. Ethan Marwitz. Mateo here? Seeing here. Zoe? Zoe's not here. Maria Belfaki. Is that how you spell it? Jeffrey Surgeon? Jeffrey Surgeon. I graduated from the... Just here? Don't see Jess. No. Okay. Are you going to save that for, want to do that first? This one's the last. Last. Okay. So what are you, Carter? Carter Broach.
That's my student teacher, but he is in Vermont.
And Miss. Molly Coats?
She's a senior.
And Steve, I don't see Stephen either. So how about Kelly Brown?
Ms. Brown?
Yes. Yes, I'm happy to take those.
Want to take a quick picture?
I need, I need, the first mentor did not get picture, and Facebook will not live if you don't come up and get a picture with the handshake. Emma.
Emma.
Oh, Emma.
Because there was the moment of panic amongst the reps, and there was no photo out, so I need to get the photo.
Just, I just want to say thank you again for being here. Ms. Brown gave me the opportunity this year to be one of the judges. And the experience was unbelievable. Was, was great. I, I'm expecting that you're going to invite me next year because I enjoy it. Thank you. You guys can stay if you want to see the process, or you guys can go home if you decide to do so. But thank you again.
Do they know the elementary schools?
And if you are interested, just so you know, the elementary school reuse is on our agenda tonight. So if you went to Maple Center or Pepin, and you want to find out what's going to happen to those, that is an exciting thing.
I don't think they have...
In there, don't move. Many of them are performing.
Bye.
I just want to say that was solid.
I will take a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of May 3rd. Any further discussion? Seeing none. For those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstain? Any... Say no? No, I view it. Motion passed. I'm not used to do that. We're going to hold the public speak time for later. It's 6:25. I will take a motion to open public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open, open public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. For those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstention? Seeing none, motion passes. The first one that we have is some transfers of our money. Counselor Rist?
We have two interdepartmental transfers, all dealing with the Veterans Department. The first is a Veterans transfer of $3,500 for the purpose of funding a temporary clerical position in order to train and prepare our future veterans aging prior to creation of Easthampton Veteran Service. This is a transfer from the Veterans Cash Benefit Account to the Veteran Part-Time Clerical. So this transfer is money that's already appropriated. It's in one account, and it's moving to a new account. The Finance Committee approved it three to zero.
Any councilor have any questions or comment about this appropriation? Anyone from the public that want to make any questions or comments about this one? Seeing none. Counselor Rist?
I move that the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $3,500 to be transferred from Veterans Cash Benefit Account, $3,500, to be transferred to the Veterans Part-Time Clerical Account, $3,500 for the purpose of funding a temporary clerical position in order to train and prepare future veterans aging prior to creation of Easthampton Veteran Service Office.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the interdepartmental transfer of $3,500 for the temporary clerical position, Veteran Service Office. Any further discussion? Seeing none. For those who are in favor?
Aye.
Anyone abstain? Seeing none. Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
The next is another interdepartmental transfer from the Veterans Department, $4,000 from the Cash Benefit Account, $4,000 for veteran supplies and materials to purchase educational promotional items and for the Easthampton Veterans Wellness Coalition in support of events that will begin in June. This is an important item, that they do these events in June. And this is simply funding these programs that will happen in June, Wellness Coalition events. We supported it three to zero.
Thank you. Any councilor have any questions or comment about this appropriation? Seeing none. Anyone from the public that want to participate and have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Counselor Rist?
I move the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $4,000 to be transferred from Veterans Cash Benefit, $4,000, to be transferred to the Veteran Supplies and Materials Account, $4,000 to create and purchase educational and promotional items for the Veterans, Easthampton Veteran Wellness Coalition in support of events that will begin in June.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the interdepartmental transfer of $4,000 to create, purchase education, and promotional item for upcoming veterans events. Any further discussion? Seeing none. For those who, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any abstain? Any against? Seeing none. Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
The next is a free cash appropriation of $2,603. This is a Ferry Street Project expense that was not reimbursed from the MassWorks Infrastructure Grant. This grant is about $4 million, and our purchaser, Mike Owens, was very apologetic that he missed it. I want everybody in the public to know, and everyone on this council to know, that Mike Owens works his tail off approving 100 invoices, hundreds of invoices and hundreds of purchases, purchase orders. And for him to miss one is understandable, and he was very apologetic. But this is less than $5,000. but this is less than five percent of a four million dollar appropriation and the Finance Committee, um, approved it three to zero. I know how hard he works and we are not at all worried about a, a small amount that's missed and we thank Mike Owens for his hard work for us.
Approved three to zero.
Any counsel have any questions or comments? Seeing no, anyone from the public? They have any questions or comment? Seeing none, thank you, Mike. Um, Counselor, arrest.
I move that a full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is two thousand six hundred and three dollars and thirteen cents to be transferred from free cash, two thousand six hundred and three dollars and thirteen cents, to be transferred to the fiscal year nineteen MassWorks Ferry Street Grant, two thousand six hundred and three dollars and thirteen cents, for the purpose of the Ferry Street Project expenses not reimbursed through the MassWorks Infrastructure Grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of two thousand six hundred and three dollars with thirteen cents for Ferry Street Project expenses not reimbursed through MassWork Grant. Any further discussion? Seeing no, for those who are in favor. Any abstention? Any against? Seeing none, motion passes. Counselor, arrest.
Next is a Police Department appropriation request of eleven thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars. This is end-of-year budget deficits. One in the Bulletproof Vest Account for eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-one cents, and Police Medical Expenses for three hundred and fifty-one dollars. Uh, there was a Bulletproof Vest Grant and there was a deficit in that, and there was a fiscal year twenty-one Injured on Duty Medical Bill, that's the three hundred and fifty-one. So these are just deficits and grants. We approved it three to zero.
Any counsel have any questions or comments? Anyone from the public wanna participate in this supplemental appropriation? Seeing none, Counselor, arrest.
I move the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is eleven thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to the Bulletproof Vest Account, eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-one cents, and the Police Medical Expense Account, three hundred and fifty-one dollars, to cover a deficit in the Bulletproof Vest Grant and to pay for fiscal year, uh, two thousand twenty-one Injured on Duty Medical Bill.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation, eleven thousand five hundred twenty-eight dollars with sixty-one cents for deficit in Bulletproof Vest Grant and payment for fiscal year twenty-one Medical Bill. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor. Any abstention? Any against? Seeing no, motion passes. Counselor, arrest.
The, the rest are, many of these are for our Department of Public Works. Our DPW head Greg Donelman is here, but these are rather straightforward. Hundred twenty-five thousand from Enterprise retained earnings for the wastewater treatment plant maintenance. Uh, this is an old wastewater treatment plant and it needs a lot of maintenance. Uh, we're chipping away, as he said, at many of the maintenance needs. And there is also support for a permit compliance assistance, which is why we have to do these maintenance. If you have any questions, Mr. President, Mr. Donelman's here, but we approve this three to zero.
Thank you, Counselor, arrest. Any counsel have any questions or comments? Counselor Sarat?
Uh, the Chair mentioned chipping away. How much more anticipated expenses are there that the, um, the treatment plant currently requires?
Mr. Donelman?
Well, difficult, difficult question to answer and put an, put an actual number to. Um, there's a multitude of recommendations from the Integrated Water Resource Management Plan that we are still working on. Um, you know, one thing we're trying to do, especially with this appropriation, is every year we can put a hundred thousand dollars into the plan over and above our operations and maintenance budget to pick things away, pick, pick away at things. Uh, in ten years, that's a million dollars, so, um, it, it is, I, I wish I could give you an exact number of what the plant's going to require, but, you know, every day the plant gets older and, um, the majority of it's over fifty years old at this point. And it's, it's a harsh environment for the, um, the pumps and the, uh, the steel, just the steel that holds the place up is just subject to some, uh, pretty intense conditions and it's, uh, you know, quickly aging.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none. Anyone from the public? They have any questions or comment? I just wanna ask, can you please mute your cellphones? So, thank you. Um, Counselor, arrest.
I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to be transferred from Enterprise retained earnings, one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, to be transferred to the Wastewater Treatment, Treatment Plant Maintenance Account, one hundred and twenty-five thousand. This appropriation will provide funding to support NPDES permit compliance assistance as well as various maintenance and repair projects at the East Hampton Wastewater Treatment Plant and related infrastructure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the NPDES Compliance and Maintenance Repair Project, Treatment Plant. Any further discussion? Seeing no, for those who are in favor. Any abstain? Any against? Seeing no, motion passes. Counselor, arrest.
The next is a large appropriation of three hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars. This is primarily to cover all of the snow, uh, needs from this past winter. A lot of it is salt. The cost of salt has skyrocketed, equipment rental, et cetera. All of this is because we only budget two hundred thousand dollars every year in that account. We do so because if we didn't have free cash, we can deficit spend this account. It's the only one in all of our budgets that we can. But fortunately, for the last few years, we've had free cash to pay the old bills. So, um, we have to pay for all of the snow work we've done and the tremendous work that the DPW does to clear the snow. One of the things we should remember is we had a tremendous ice, uh, year and icing Mount Tom. The road is incredible, so that's why the cost, hundred and sixty thousand just for salt, so.
Thank you.
We've come to three to zero.
Thank you, Counselor, arrest. Any counsel have any questions or comment? Counselor Sarat?
With the rising cost of salt, are there other alternatives that could be considered in the future?
There are some products out there, however, all of our equipment at this point is, uh, designed and intended for spreading, for spreading salt. So, you know, as, as new technologies come out and, and, um, things come forward, you know, we'll be looking, uh, you know, we look to calibrate our, our, um, spreaders so that we're not putting down any more than we need to, but, um, it's certainly a challenge, especially this year especially. I mean, we had long-duration ice events that just required more and more salt. Our salt cost went from about sixty dollars a ton to over eighty.
Counselor Denham?
It's, it's, just a clarification. It's not just snow and ice, but it's also just freezing when it's, things melt.
Anytime the road starts to ice up, you get a thaw during the day. Black ice, those, those type of events. We have to get out and treat the roads, keep everybody, keep everything safe.
Just wanna make sure the public understands that.
Counselor Peak?
I just wanna say that at one point during this last winter, and I've said this to you before, but just for the pub, the benefit of the public, I drove back from Everett, Massachusetts to East Hampton in the middle of one of those ice storms and the pike the entire way was a skating rink. I saw more accidents than I've ever seen in my life. I nearly got into a few myself. It took about five hours to do what I thought was gonna be an hour and a half drive. And the only real section of that where I wasn't pretty certain I was gonna die sometime in the next few minutes was going down the damn mountain. So, it's expensive. We should look into better, you know, long-term, we should look into how we can do it. I, everything, I agree with everyone's thing, but I also just wanna say, like, having a road that's this and that was safe to drive in in that weather when the entire Mass Pike was not is a technical accomplishment and you and your guys should be very proud of that.
I can't take a lot of credit, but Jim and the guys over at the Highway Department do a phenomenal job keeping the road safe.
Any other counsel? Anyone from the public have any questions or comment about this supplemental appropriation? Seeing none, Counselor, arrest.
I move the full council approve a supplemental appropriation of three hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars to be transferred from free cash, three hundred and twenty-four thousand one hundred, to be transferred to the following accounts. Snow overtime, four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Snow equipment rental, ninety-nine thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Snow chemical account, thirteen thousand dollars. Salt, one hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. And school plowing, forty-six thousand two hundred dollars. The funding will cover the annual deficit in DPW's snow removal budget for FY twenty twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to cover annual DPW's snow removal budget deficit for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor. Anyone abstain? Anyone against? Seeing no, motion passes. Counselor, arrest.
The next is an end-of-year budget def, shortfall of twelve thousand dollars for trash removal for the schools, eight thousand three hundred dollars in trash removal for the town buildings. This is also under, uh, our DPW head Greg Donelman. Um, it's just an end-of-year budget. We needed to cover the deficit.
Thank you, Counselor, arrest.
Approved three to zero.
Any counsel have any questions or comment? Seeing none. Anyone from the public? They have any questions or comment about this supplemental appropriation? Seeing none, Counselor, arrest.
Sup, I, I move the full council approve a supplemental appropriation of twelve thousand dollars from free cash, twelve thousand dollars, to be transferred to trash removal schools, eight thousand three hundred. Trash removal town buildings, three thousand seven hundred, to fund the increased trash pickup costs of municipal and school department buildings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of twelve thousand dollars to fund trash pickup costs of the municipal building and school department buildings. Any further discussion? Seeing no, for those who are in favor. Anyone abstain? Anyone against? Seeing none, motion passes. Counselor, arrest.
The next is very interesting. It's eleven thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. Uh, this is the FY twenty-one MVP Climate Resiliency Grant and we are paying back staff time, in-kind staff time. And my notes are a little sketchy, so I wanna ask Greg to explain this to the full council if it's okay, Mr. President.
Mr. Donelman?
So, the project that you're seeing completed right now on Cherry Street, um, back in FY twenty-one was in design and in the planning stages. A lot of that design and planning was funded with grant funding from the Massachusetts, um, Vulnerability Preparedness Program. And part of receiving that grant money, we agreed to match a certain portion of the funding that the state devotes with in-kind staff time. So, any time that our staff spends in the field or with the design, uh, engineers working on the project counts towards that. However, we, we did not, in that grant year, meet the amount we had agreed to with staff time, as that was right in July, it was July of twenty twenty to June of twenty twenty-one. Uh, we had staff home, uh, you know, working, we were working staggered schedules. City Hall was mostly closed. It was, uh, right through COVID, so it's really all I could do to keep the department, you know, running. And, um, we just, we failed to meet the in-kind match and we need to clean up the grant, close out the grant and clean up the account. Um, we put some checks and balances in on our next, on our other grant projects that we have going on, uh, for Emerald Place, uh, and, and we've already met the rest of the match for Cherry Street for this grant year, so. We're, um, you know, trying to keep a closer eye on it now and make sure it doesn't happen again.
Thank you. Any counsel have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Anyone, did you raise your hand?
I, I just wanted to applaud everyone involved with that project. I know it was difficult and there were a lot of, um, the director and I had a conversation. I spoke to the planner too. There were a lot of unpredictable factors, um, but it's really, um, the, the nature of that project and the sustainable elements are really something to hang our hat on and it is nice to see the street paved now. A lot of people are happy, just in time for Mother's Day. A few constituents are thrilled about that. But yeah, so thank you, everyone involved, and it looks really nice.
Yeah, I mean, the great thing is the water and sewers have been completely replaced with very little to no burden on the ratepayer, so that's, you know, very, I think that's a huge aspect of that project.
Any other counsel? Anyone from the public? They have any questions or comment about this, um, supplemental appropriation? Seeing none, Counselor, arrest.
I move the full council approve a supplemental appropriation of eleven thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and eight cents to be transferred from Enterprise retained earnings, eleven thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and eight cents, to be transferred to fiscal year twenty-one MVP Climate Resiliency Account, eleven thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars and eight cents. The funding will cover a deficit in-kind matched staff time from the FY twenty-one MVP Action Grant for green infrastructure planning and resiliency design for Cherry Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of eleven thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars with eight cents to cover deficit in-kind matched staff time, Cherry Street MVP Action Grant. Any further discussion? Seeing no, for those who are in favor. Anyone abstain? Against? Motion passes. I will pass the gavel to the Vice President, uh, like, um, the majority of the consuls know and the public. I will have to abstain for the next topic because my house is next to one of the school buildings. So I'll pass the gavel to Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so we have in front of us, uh, the recommendation to accept the proposal from Arch Communities LLC as recommended by the Valuation Committee as a preferred developer for Maple Center and Peppin Elementary Schools. And this was, um, something that came out of the Recommendation Committee as well as came to Property Committee, so I would turn it over to Counselor Kuzinski, um, if, if the President so.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Uh, first of all, let me start off by saying it isn't every day that we get the opportunity to take what is essentially a heritage handed down to us by people a hundred years ago and everyone who invested all the way through up until the time the schools had finished their mission. I'm talking about Maple, Peppin, and Center Streets. It really is an honor and I bow my head to the people who, who struggled and helped start this whole process. We now have these wonderful assets and there's been a process over, I'm gonna say, at least five, maybe seven years or longer, that we have studied and evaluated and allowed a public process that I'm very proud of. Proud to say that there's been public participation. And I'm also proud to say that I think what we'd be doing today is joining with a group of folks who also are interested in having continued public participation in the entire process and a creative way of building a future, because we're not only looking backwards, we're looking forwards. Forwards for all the affordable housing that we'll be able to provide here in East Hampton. It's never enough, but it is one heck of a dent in afford, i- i- in the need for affordable housing. And then to craft that whole process in with the needs of the community as expressed by the community. I'm talking about items, uh, like, uh, having, uh, the gymnasium, the exercise area at, at the Peppin Center and the auditorium at the, the Peppin Center, along with public parking over at Maple Street and public playground at Maple Street, uh, all be part of a process that I think we've really met the political interests of our community. And now by that, I mean the best interests of our community. The folks who will be served and be using these facilities. So, I'm very happy to introduce, uh, the recommendation of the Property Committee and I, I wanna thank all who attended all those meetings, including the Evaluation Committee, that worked very hard and I wanted to give kudos to the mayor for having it all, that, that also be an open process. And I wanted to mention that here in public, because typically, it, it isn't a, a process that is broadcast on, on community television, recorded and available for people. That really is something special and I think East Hampton should be very proud of itself for that. I'd like to thank the folks from the Senior Center who came out to participate in this process, uh, the folks from every single group. And I believe we'll be making an historic partnership. Uh, that being said, uh, would any of the counselors like further elucidation of the plans? I'd be happy to call up, uh, our experts, because we have experts from, uh, our, our consultant, Ms. Innis is in the audience.
I noticed in the packet you have two, I think it's two, conditions, three conditions. Uh, one is, and I wanted to know if there's conditions and recommendations. Wanted to know legally, are the conditions, as far as I know they are, binding on the contract, uh, that will be formulated between the city and, is it binding?
The items that are requirements, the items that are, uh,
Required condition.
Required condition, that, where we say the mayor shall negotiate. That is a required condition.
And it's bound, so.
Bound, binding by, by, by us on the mayor, she, uh, must do these first, uh, two, the first three items that we, uh, first two items that we are gonna recommend. items that we, first two items that we are going to recommend. And then we have a, shall substantially include the following provision, which essentially is binding, but with a little bit of flexibility according to the needs of the entire plan. And then the council makes recommendations regarding three other items.
If I might follow up, Consul Rest. Since Arch presented these as things that they were willing to do, preserve the gym, preserve the auditorium, I'm assuming that there is no objection that these aren't deal breakers at all as far as you know, Consul.
As far as I know, these are items that were built into the package and the proposal. And frankly, I think it's one of the reasons that the proposal is receiving so much support.
Thank you.
And I would add to that as someone who is on the valuation committee, that in the proposal and in the interviews, this was something that was stated as an intention of the developer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, I would be happy to have our consultant or the city planner or procurement officer to come up and give any comments if you would like to at this time, or not.
Only if you need us to.
Okay. We'll hold you in reserve then. Okay, Counselor Kuzinski.
I'd be happy to present the motion, and we could discuss it after, after the public has a chance.
Any counselors have any?
Yeah. So, you know, listen, I'll just, you know, to kind of contextualize, you know, I've been following this process since before I was a city councilor. You know, I, I worked with these folks here to help develop the RFP. So to see that it has gotten to this point is kind of a highlight for my public service. So I'm really happy to see where it's at. And if I'm being totally honest, I didn't believe that any of the proposals that we would get would be as progressive towards affordable housing than what we actually got. So to all three of the proposals, I just wanted to say thank you to those individuals for putting together a kind of progressive housing package that I didn't even dream would come to fruition. So I'm really happy about that. The only thing that I have a specific challenge with, and this is nothing for any of us to solve now, this is for people 15 to 20 years from now, and I hope that we have all moved on and done other things with our careers. And that is that in the previous, or the alternate proposals, there's, it is specifically pointed out that the properties will be owned in perpetuity. And in the Arch proposal, it seems to suggest that it will happen for a minimum of 15 years, which is what's required for the tax credit, and there doesn't seem to be any indication that ownership happens beyond those 15 years. My concern for that is that while we may be entering into an agreement with an entity that we trust, that we have good working relationships with, that in the future, if they decide to sell those properties, whomever sits on this council needs to be extra mindful of the types of individuals who are going to be entering this community because what I would hate to see is progressive housing policy, like what we've got, to then be preyed upon by developers or property real estate owners who actually don't have care for people who are poor. So this is, of course, something that happens, you know, one to two decades from now, and I know that that's not something that we solve for specifically, but on the record for future leaders, please remember what the intent of this development is, and I hope that it continues into the future. That's all.
Any other counselors?
I just want to make, I agree with everything. I appreciate all the work that has gone into this. I think it's, it was a very long process, and I'm going to make a comment, but it's not intended to be disrespectful or anything. The only concern I have, and I've just been out and about, well, I'm often out and about, but I've just more recently just noticed, we have a lot of parking in the city, and I think it's underutilized. And so we're asking for yet more parking and blacktop space, and I just want to say that we don't have a parking problem. We have a problem with transportation and moving people about within the city. And so as we talk about ecological efforts and greenhouse gases and, you know, down the way, I think that we shouldn't be making it easier for people to drive. We need to be encouraging people to make different choices and just to put another parking thing in to make it easier for people to get into their cars and drive down and whatnot, I think is, it is counterproductive to, I think, the ideas that people have for the future of this city and how we can be more sustainable and more mindful of global warming. So I just want to say that.
Any other counselors? Counselor Sarit.
Just having participated closely in, in the, in the process, and also I appreciate you harkening back to those visioning sessions all the way back in the high school cafeteria, looking at the revisioning of downtown and bringing that, connecting that to what we see now, two committees appointed by the mayor, the RFP Committee and the selection committee, and then all the work done by the property committee. You know, I had, I had some of the opposite concerns of, of my colleague at the end, that I was very sure that we were going to get affordability, but I was also, I was concerned about the public amenities that were going to potentially lose. The Peppin Gym and Auditorium are huge resources for the community, and I had consistently argued that if we're going to build, if we're going to build resources, especially for people with fewer resources, we need to include places where they can congregate and recreate. And I'm very glad to see that this proposal included both of those, both for the people who will be enjoying these living spaces as well as the community more globally. I mean, I felt to some degree this was catching lightning in a bottle because I really did not expect that either of these spaces were to get preserved in the recommendations or, certainly not both of them. And then just watching the Arch interview, I appreciated the flexibility that they demonstrated in terms of alternate designs and being sensitive to, especially as it, as it pertained to Maple Street and that corridor in the cultural district, the potential need for some parking there as well as preservation of the playground and thoughts about how to make those spaces greener. So I just wanted to thank everyone involved, certainly from within our, our own city departments, planning, procurement, mayor's office, et cetera, the council, all the volunteers, but also, I mean, it was really nice to see how much input came from the community as well as the business community to really make this, I think, the best proposal we could get. So that's all.
Counsel Rest.
I just, Counsel Riley brings up a point that I need to ask about. Is this project deed restricted in the future transfer of ownership? In other words, we've established affordable housing. Can it be sold to a future owner that can change that? Is this, is that part of the deal? Do we know?
That's a very good question.
So just make sure you state your name.
Absolutely. Hi, I'm Rich Relic. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm principal of Arch Communities. I'm joined here tonight by Kevin Vishian and Eric Rex of Davis Square Architects to answer your question on the deed restriction. So that, in order to facilitate the tax credits that go into the development of the project, DHD requires a deed restriction. It is, it's a long-term restriction. I think you can do it at 50 years, but we typically do it in perpetuity for all the affordable units. So if the property is, I haven't, I've never sold one of my affordable housing developments to date, but if it ever did get to a point where it was sold, the deed restrictions carry forward. They don't, they can't be erased.
Thank you, because Counsel Riley brought up a great point, and I appreciate knowing this. This is great.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other counselors?
I have a quick question for the.
It looks like we might have another question for you. Counsel Kuzinski.
First of all, I wanted to congratulate you on a proposal that is very adaptable, amenable, and working with our community. I look forward to having the community look, work, work with you, and I do hope that we could do that as we develop future plans.
Absolutely. Thank you. We feel the same way.
I wanted to ask about in perpetuity for the, all of the public benefits, and that is your commitment. That's my understanding.
That is correct. For the auditorium and the gym, there's, there's not necessarily a deed restriction that I can think of that goes along with the, the units, like the affordable units would have, but I'd be amenable to putting that into any sort of agreement that we have to state that clearly, if that, if that's something that the.
I think that would, that would make sense. As I look around the room, I see nodding of heads, subject, of course, to future council review. I mean, who knows what the needs of the community may be 50, 100 years from now, but I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. Absolutely, that would be fine with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Anyone from the public like to comment on this? We're going to ask you to come to the podium. You'll have three minutes to make sure you state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Jana Tatro. I live at 52 Pomeroy Street. I'm the chair of the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. I'm here tonight to speak in support of Arch Communities moving forward as a preferred respondent and thank them for a great proposal and thank all of the respondents for proposals. I think the fact that we got three proposals really speaks to the desire to invest in East Hampton, which I think is really important. I also just want to say thank you to the city, the city council, to the mayors, the planning department, to the RFP Committee, to the evaluation committee, to the property subcommittee. This is a big deal. It's a really big deal that the city identified three city-owned buildings for affordable housing, and I think we really should be proud of that. Not all communities would do that. Some communities would sell them. We could have market rate condos going into any of these buildings, and the fact that the city collectively saw the importance and need for affordable housing is really, makes me proud to live here. I think it should make all of you proud of the work that you've done, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to come to the podium and speak?
My name's Andrew Hebert. My wife and I live at 48 Franklin Street here in East Hampton, and we own two storefront spaces on Cottage Street, 56 and 86. I'm here specifically, first of all, I really want to commend the, the school reuse committee for the great work that it's done to get us to this point, and everyone else at City Hall, this is, it's truly amazing that you've done what you've done, and I truly respect the affordable housing component of the, of the whole process. What I am here to speak to is parking for the cultural district, and, and I take exception from Counselor Denham's statement or that we don't have a parking problem here. We do have a parking problem here, and all you have to do is come out during peak periods, and I think it's understandable for most of the counselors in this room that if you go out and you look at traffic along, parking along Adams Street, when restaurants are out full, people are going into the neighborhoods and parking because there is no adequate parking along Cottage Street right now. It just can't handle the overflow. Chapel Street, where there are some existing spaces, are often, I use that now if I want to go over to Nene's or any of the, at night to pick up something to eat, and I can't, a lot of times I can't even get under Chapel Street now because it's so full. I think that someone mentioned that the, one of you mentioned that the, that the Arch Street had a very adaptable plan, and I would commend them for that, and I would agree. However, there's not enough public parking spaces being allotted for the property. If you, we need at least 20, my idea would be that to mirror the existing parking lot that's on Cottage Street now, which I believe is 26 spaces, and we need at least that, new spaces, not the existing, it's not, it's disingenuous to consider the existing spaces along Chapel Street. They're there already. What the, if, if you don't use the Maple Street property now, because this is the last chance, once that gets developed, there is nothing up this end of town that's going to allow for additional parking, and the needs, if needs are not being met now, what happens in the future? And I need to point out that it's not just people from East Hampton that are, that are adding fuel, that are making the Cottage Street merchants so successful. They do count on people from out of town who drive here and come in. East Hampton is becoming a destination city, and in order to, and, and so the merchants do depend upon out of town customers and traffic, and if you don't accommodate that, then it's going to hurt those merchants. It really is. I mean, I can walk from my house down to Cottage Street if I want, and I admit I'm being lazy when I just drive over to look for a space if I'm in a hurry or it's a cold winter night or something like that. Otherwise, my wife and I, we're out walking the dog. We can come down, and that's fine.
Thank you. That's, that's three minutes. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you. And hopefully 26 spaces will be considered. There is room to do it if you, if, if, if you make the effort to do it.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? So Johnny's ready. We know, but you have to state your name for the record.
Johnny Daniele. I own Nene's Restaurant in East Hampton. I also own two properties at a butte Maple Street School. Again, I came here representing the Cottage Street community. We really do suffer in terms of parking. Nene's has been there 45 years. We've always managed, but we've also seen an increase in restaurants and in retail spaces. And again, all of those parking spaces that did exist have been choked down by all the increasing retail and restaurants. And I think that, I believe the Arch proposal has 14 spaces, and I think that we require more. And I think that that's where, if there is flexibility, I think that everybody on Cottage Street is looking for an increase of parking, and I don't think 14 is really adequate. I don't know if that's the exact number or not, but I love the proposal with everything else except for the parking concept. So if we could kind of negotiate more parking, that would be great. That's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I think we might have had someone online, unless there's anybody in the room that would like to speak. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Jared Quinn. I own Harry King Ruggen Home, 36 Cottage Street, and I've been in business in East Hampton for 18 years, 12 years on Cottage Street, and I never thought that it would be like this 12 years ago. But parking is becoming an issue, not on Tuesday and Wednesday afternoon, but Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Certainly, I have a lot of customers, and myself, we carry heavy rugs to and from cars, and the parking spaces are getting farther and farther away. Certainly after 5 o'clock, if I need to come park or if I'm open until 6 or 7, there is, all of a sudden, there is not much parking at all, very hard to park. Started like four years ago before the pandemic. It was a brief break, and now it's back. I guess that's because we have good restaurants and bars. So I can definitely feel this parking pinch coming on. Parking lot would be great, a new parking lot, or even more parking spaces at the new development. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Leonard Bag.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeff Bag. I'm the city planner, and I wasn't going to speak, but I just, I wasn't, I don't really want to address parking, but I, what I want to say is really just echoing what Jana mentioned, just the proudness, the, the sense of the accomplishment that we should all feel. This has been, you know, it probably started in about 2015 when the schools, the school department started to evaluate the building, the buildings. But what really started to take shape was in 2018 as, as the community started to lead up to voting to, to fund the construction of the new school. That's when this all, this effort really became concerted. So I just wanted to express a real sense of pride that the, the three proposals that we got were, were really great, and I think the community vision that we laid out was really helpful. I think we've heard that from the developers who looked at it was this, this clear sense of what we wanted. The thing I really just wanted to express is that we have been, let's say we started this in 2018. I just wanted to make sure that people knew that, you know, there aren't, there are not shovels in the ground immediately, so we are sort of like in the middle of this process. So, you know, some of the estimates might be 24 to 30 months before construction were to start, and then there's about a year or, you know, possibly a year or a little over a year of construction. So we have a road ahead of us still. be 24 to 30 months before construction were to start. And then there's about a year or, you know, possibly a year or a little over a year of construction. So we have a road ahead of us still. And through that process, there will also be planning board public hearings that would be really looking at the details of this. So I just wanted to kind of express that this is a monumental point in time, but it is actually really the beginning of the next phase. So I just want to make sure that people know that there's not going to be shovels in the ground really anytime soon. And I feel like that could be a misconception for people, that hearing of this success. And, you know, then the developer has a lot of due diligence, a lot of funding to put together and then go through the permitting process. So we look forward to that. And then just with parking, you know, I think anything we can get out of this proposal is going to be advantageous. It is actually a really sustainable move that we can utilize some portion of this property for public purpose. You know, in the early stages, there was proposals to tear down the building and build 150 parking spaces. And I think that's what we don't need, and we got a really good compromise. But we are still, you know, we don't have real signage. We don't have a management system. We're not really doing some of these baseline things that we could be doing with parking. Then as soon as this is underway, I think we should be committed to doing more parking management strategies, which I think will help move people around. And that's something, even painting spaces, making the sign, the signage clear as where it's one hour or 15 minutes. So we have a long list of things that we can still do to help support the businesses. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there in the parking, the parking comment. Thanks.
Thank you.
It looks good.
Anybody else in the room? Seeing none, anybody online? Looks like Wallace, maybe? I think you might have had your hand up. You're going to have to unmute and just be aware. Name an address for the record, and you have three minutes.
He's still muted.
Still muted.
And it's him. I don't, I don't have the power to unmute.
Wallace, can you unmute yourself? Sometimes if you press the space bar, it does it.
Let me see if I can put someone else.
I can't remotely do it.
Mm-mm.
They should allow that.
Well, Wallace, I assume you could.
Can anyone direct him?
Try now, Wallace.
Hit the microphone on the bottom.
Yes, I just want to know if anyone else from the public. Lindsay, are you there? I just want to know if it's off.
Yeah.
Acting President, put a border.
Yes.
Acting President, if his microphone's not working, one option is could he enter whatever statement to the chat? Is that a possibility? No?
I think the chat is disabled.
Okay. Just wanted to put that out there.
Yeah. Yeah, so Wallace, if we can't, if we can't figure out how to get your microphone on, you can feel free to email us your comment, and we will read it.
I would like, is there a way to get him, excuse me, to have him be directed to what buttons to push to get to the microphone off, be more technologically?
It depends on, like a lot of computers, if you just press your space bar, it'll unmute you while you're pressing it. Wallace, can you try pressing your space bar to see if that will unmute?
That's...
I think he can. Wallace, can you shake your head if you can hear us?
Yes, because he's in the media. He's listening to us.
Yeah.
He didn't shake his head.
He did not.
Can he call in? That might make sense. Can we recess for five minutes?
I unmute myself, so.
Disallowed because we didn't allow someone to publicly speak. That's my concern. Mr. President?
Yes.
I, Vice President, sorry. I think it's really important that every member of the public be allowed to contribute. If there's a way to give Wallace the phone number to dial in?
I think the phone number's on the agenda that he probably used to... It looks like we're getting a call from East Hampton Media, so.
Can you do it?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes, we can hear everybody. Thank you.
Yep.
Now, he's supposed to...
All right, Wallace, you can unmute now, I believe.
And it's him, because Lindsay just talked in. East Hampton Media is working now.
Yeah.
Wallace, try pressing your space bar.
It's probably going to happen.
It's him. Have to get out one, look in again.
Yeah, you might, you might have to disconnect from the call and come back in.
Can he hear us?
He's talking. I don't... Okay, well, we try to figure this out. Is there anybody else online that would like to make a comment? Looks like he's frozen, so maybe he left and he's coming back. I mean...
It's his computer.
Yeah.
It's individual computer. It's not us, so we didn't make him.
So it seems like since other peoples are working, that this is just a technical issue on the user's end. So I think that what I would do is I would entertain, unless anybody else has any comments, I would entertain a motion.
I am reluctant to introduce a motion at this time when it is a member of the public who clearly wants to say something to us. And I think we have the obligation, if there's a possible way to do it, to hear.
So we know that...
So I'm happy to...
I'm just going to state, I'm just going to state, hold on, Counselor Kozinski, I'm going to state that our system is working on our end. We've just heard from Lindsay that she can hear us and we can hear her. So this is, this is an issue with the individual user. And what you wanted?
We give them...
And we've spent a significant amount of time on this at this point. And so there are multiple methods. There is a call-in method as well beyond this, and I haven't seen that happen. So I think that this time it's, we're safe to move forward. And, you know, we've done our due diligence as trying to allow the public to participate.
So, point of clarification, does it need to be Counselor Kozinski that makes the motion? Can any of us make it?
I think, I think it's probably a specific motion.
It's a specific motion. I'm happy to make the motion.
Okay.
I just wanted to be sure we covered all our bases, dotted our i's, crossed our t's on the matter. I hear Counselor Derby say that it is an individual user. And I suppose if every individual user who called in was unable to, if they could just hold up the process by not being able to speak.
He just had his mic off, sorry.
It's not a system problem.
Oh, wait.
He had it off for a second there.
No, he had it off for a few seconds, and then I think he, whatever.
So Wallace, if you can hear us, I'll give you another opportunity to participate if you can unmute.
He just had it unmuted.
There, there.
There you go.
I think he is. Yeah.
We can hear you now.
There we go.
Beautiful.
It's a beautiful thing, what I've seen the council accomplish in facilitating discussion amongst a variety of departments here. There's definitely a sense of ownership that is, make no mistake, that, oh, boy. I see the relationship between ourselves and the community is that the council and its failure instrumentalities are the providers in the community. They're the customer. And so really, it's marketing all over again. It's a process for working smarter. And I was superintendent of the Cemetery Commission in Southampton many years ago. And what I just want to say, and then I'll leave the floor back to all of you, is that any idea that it starts small, and if you're going to give the process that we're all engaged in right now, a level of conviviality, a level that, a level that from small, from small things come great results that make us, make us feel proud of our community. In the Cemetery Commission, somebody gifted us 80 acres of land for future real estate, for future burials. And it's not so much having surplus land. It was the way that it was invested. It was invested by four different departments in the town, i.e. the Park Commission, the Water Commission, the Conservation Commission, and the Cemetery Commission. And we all pooled equally our resources in order to seal the deal on the, on the property, on the gift that was, like I said, had a fair market value of $80,000. And we can only hope that there's going to be more of that. And...
Wallace, thank you so much. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. First of all, let me say that this, to the councilors, that this is recommended by the Property Committee 3 to 0. And I wanted to thank Counselor Zaret for his hard work throughout the process, and our newest member, Counselor Derby, who joined us recently. And I think everybody worked very hard for that. So thank you so much. That being said, I'd like to move that the city council accept the proposal from Arch Communities LLC, the proposal, as recommended by the Evaluation Committee, as the preferred developer for the Maple Center and Peppin Elementary Schools, subject to the following. The mayor shall negotiate an agreement with the preferred development team, which shall include the following two provisions. One, retain the auditorium and gym space at the Peppin School for public use, as stated on page seven of the proposal, and for the nominal cost, as described in the interview of March 22, 2023. And, two, provide public parking and a children's playground at the Maple Street, Maple School, similar to the Maple Concept Plan dated May 25, 2022, and available on the city's website. And shall substantially include the following provision. Three, provide environmentally sensitive landscaping, including the installation of environmentally sensitive landscaping and native plantings, consistent with evaluation criteria number five for the environmental sustainability and of the commitment on page eight of the proposal to pursue LEED certification and receive Enterprise Green Communities certification. The council recommends that the agreement, one, provide a timeline of payments related to the proposed $1,285,000 purchase price on page nine of the proposal, and, two, provide access to the Peppin Gym as feasible during the construction period, unless prevented by a temporary safety requirement or the renovation of the space itself, as described in the interview of March 22, 2023. And, three, increase the number of affordable units provided, as described in the interview of March 22, 2023.
Second? We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the council? I just want to just say one thing. In my tenure, the last 20 years, we've disposed of a lot of city property, and I've been involved with all of it. And this is the one I am the most proud of and the most excited about. And I think the way that it was done was really well-executed, and I'm very thankful that I was able to be involved in it on multiple levels. And I'm very excited for this to come to East Hampton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or dissensions?
Interesting.
One abstention. Motion passes. Congratulations. Why do I follow that?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. You did a great job.
Thank you.
I just want to remind everybody, we're still in the meeting.
Congratulations.
We have another public hearing for the proposed change of the home rule charter, section 2-10. Counselor Rest.
We have 2-10 and 3-9. Mr. President, the charter is our constitution. The changes we looked at, one was that I provided originally was mostly 3-9, 3-1, the compensation for the mayor. We decided not to make any changes there because it's based on ordinance. And the last time we changed the salary, we did incremental increases, and the city attorney said that was fine. And so we didn't feel there was need to codify that in the charter. Charter 2-10, there was a request made to extend that to 60 days. The Rules Committee does not recommend this at this time. We, for the following reasons. 45 days was sufficient for the last 13 years, since the charter was changed from 30 days in 2011. The primary reason for this section in the charter is to judge whether to deny an appointment, reminding everybody that if no action is taken after 45 days, the appointment is affirmed. Adding more time would be detrimental to getting volunteers, especially minoritized candidates who have been marginalized in the community to fill positions open on our many boards and committees. It is our duty to expedite the approval process and support of boards and committees, to diversify their membership, ensure quorums are met, promote equitable divisions of labor, and responsibilities. Additionally, the 45-day limit only poses a challenge for summer months. And in the summer months, 45 days still allows, given that we are presented, or the changes to say received, at a meeting, say in June, when we receive, if we only had one meeting in June and we received the appointment in June, there's 30 days before it has to come back to the council. There's adequate time for it to be dealt with. But we could also call a special meeting if necessary. The minor language change in this, there's very little change to 2-10 in reality, except that the city attorney wanted to use the words "received" rather than "presented." He felt "presented" was ambiguous. And anytime, we can remove ambiguity. So I realized that some would want the 60 days, but we really felt that that would inhibit people from getting on a committee, because that's a long time from the point of appointment to the point of being on the committee. So that's the rules. Mr. President, I will be presenting these as two separate motions, if that's okay with you. In other words, we're going to move 2-10 once the debate is over. Okay?
Thank you, Counselor Rest. Any councilor have any questions coming about this? Counselor Riley?
So with respect to the Rule Committee decision, I don't know that either of the members of the Rule Committee have been chairs of the Appointment Committee. So to provide the perspective of what it means to oversee this committee, you stated that the only time that this would pose a challenge for the 45-day limit is during the summer months. However, I received critique from almost half of the members in this body. When the end of the year came, and there were dozens upon dozens upon dozens of people who were before the committee to be reappointed, and I did not have the time for it. And the critique was that I didn't do my job, and that we should have vetted this process more. I wanted to set multiple meetings throughout the month, and I was met with both council and city employee objection to that process. So I would encourage the folks who vote to approve the rules to stay at 45 days, to provide me with some sort of a solution when December comes, because I don't like rubber stamping 50-plus people without actually talking to anybody. And the only way to do that is with more time. So we can, we can do this. It's totally fine by me if, if the, the council decides that forty-five days is sufficient. I disagree with the fact that it is sufficient. And if you do vote forty-five is, is sufficient, then I hope that I can hear from individuals on what the appropriate way is to manage dozens of reappointments when the time comes. And we've got, you know, seven months before that happens, so I, I'm, I'm open.
Counselor Rest?
I hear you, and I hope I was never one to criticize. I think what you're doing on the committee, vetting all these appointments, is admirable. Most of the end-of-year appointments are reappointments. We have debated this, I believe, when Lindsay Rothschild was the Appointments Chair. How do we do reappointments in a more efficient way? I believe that can be done better by rule than by charter. And when I say that is, I'm, I know we talked about at that time trying to get to the chairs of the committees to get a blanket summary of do these people attend their meetings, et cetera. But I believe we should investigate a rule that helps the chair of the Appointments Committee rather than change this. Because I really strongly feel, and I think at the meeting, Counselor Gomez and Counselor Denham, both agreed that waiting sixty days from the point of a new member getting on a committee is difficult. I hear you, though, with regard to the reappointments, and I think there has to be an efficient way. And I ask the councilors that have been around a while, especially Counselor Derby and myself, we need to think of a way to help our Appointments Chair, but not change the charter because I think that, the charter is, is, is codifying, it's a constitution, it's a major change. If you change it to sixty days, it's for blanket, it's everything, rather than a rule that we can adopt and amend at any time. So that's just my feeling on that. And I believe the sixty days would be detrimental to getting people to volunteer and having to wait a long time to, to actually get on a committee. And, and, and I hear, though, Counselor Riley, he does a fantastic job. Because we used to, always, rubber stamp. And that's not the way to go either. Because you want to find out, are these people actually coming to meetings? Are they doing their jobs? That's my comment.
Counselor Sarat?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I just want to recognize the exceptional job that the Appointments Committee is doing, as well as their chair, and the efforts they are making. As the, the public record reflects, this came to the Rule Committee for myself and Counselor Gomez because of the complicated time constraints that were produced by the current language. As with many decisions by the council, I like the tweak that was made because I think, at least as of right now, it accomplishes what I was looking for. To not have that clock starting at a time that puts us in a difficult position so that the, in, in the way that these appointments are introduced and in the way that we meet, that it creates, it's a situation where it would, that, that forty-five days comes just before a meeting, and we, we don't, we don't have a rule to extend it. They're not allowed by charter to extend it. And, and the, the appointment, the appointment basically becomes valid by rule, and there's no vote. We also did have already, we've experienced a great outpouring of engagement in the city, and because of that, we're seeing a lot more people wanting to be on committees. Thank you. And because of that, too, their schedules don't always line up with when the meetings are. And I just wanted to make sure that the committee had an opportunity to engage in the, in the, with the appointee, and the appointee had the opportunity to engage with the committee, not for the sake of keeping them out, but making sure that we, we were bringing them in and there weren't questions or, and, and that the process was fulfilled. So I appreciate what the committee ended up doing with this and the flexibility to kind of think a little bit, not outside the box necessarily, but just play with the way that the wording is and, and make it work. And I'm here for my colleague, City at the End there, to, however I can support you in making sure that, you know, your process is met. I'm, I'm happy to chat more.
Counselor Kocinski?
I certainly am sensitive to Counselor Riley's struggle at the end of the year. That, that's a huge, a huge assignment. That being said, the forty-five days for every average appointment, every new appointment that comes up, I think that makes, that makes sense. I think it has worked for the long haul. I, I think it has, I'd like to think it has worked for the end-of-the-year appointments also. However, I would suggest that we deal with this not as a charter matter, but as a council matter, either a rule or, or whatever we do. Something outside of that. And we, we can look at things like shortening the time period for the appointment. Some appointments could expire in November of the year, rather than in December of the year. They could expire in October, whatever, some, some could. Not every single one. Some are defined by law to be three-year appointments or whatever. But that's the kind of solution, I think, that will benefit us. So I will be in favor of the forty-five days.
Thank you, Counselor Kocinski. Counselor Denham?
First thing, you know, I just, I, I want to be respectful, right? You clearly do a lot of work for the appointment process, obviously for this council and getting that done. And I recognize that there's some pain around that. And I'm saying that because soon I'll be feeling that pain as a new member of that committee, right? And so I want to acknowledge that I've put myself in this situation as well, right? And, and I want to be mindful. I thought what you did this year in terms of, and not even just at the end of the year, throughout the year, when you haven't been able to speak to someone, you have spoken to the chair of that or the director of, of that particular board, et cetera, who oversees that board. And I think those are really valid, right? Because I think people are volunteering. And I've been on this committee for two years now, or whatever. And now I have to come and I have to speak to you to prove myself for that, right? That's, that feels like, also like an additional hoop. And so I think that we also want to be respectful of the fact that people are dedicating their time and they are showing those commitments. And this person is validating that and, and, and acknowledging that. And so I think there's an element of, of that. When someone blows it off and they don't show up and then they skip the meeting, right? And I think that's a different kind of process and understanding how we kind of engage with that resident who is, who is volunteering. And we decide at that point, is this someone who needs to, to return, right? But I think there's, there's a level of, of wanting to be respectful across the board in terms of, of how people participate. And in regards to Counselor Zaret's comment about, you know, making sure they understand the time and when they meet, so like, that's a question on the application, right? And so there is, there are elements that we are trying to build into those pieces, right? To help people know when, that they understand the expectations and the requirements of those things. And so I think there's, there's small pieces that, that are in place to help us. But I don't think we're rubber stamp, you know, I don't want us to think that we're rubber stamping someone who's demonstrated their commitment already.
Thank you, Counselor Denham. Any other councilors? Counselor Riley?
Yeah, so, so here's the thing. I, I will vote in favor of this. But I, I need everybody to really understand that the appointment process is broken. It doesn't work the way that it's supposed to. And this is going to require a lot of work. And, and if you all agree, or a great number of you agree, to help me fix this process, then I'm in favor of voting yes to leave this as it is. But we need to come together and, and fix this because there are some committees that fundamentally alter the way that the city is run. And then there are some which, and I'm, this is not to disparage the work that they're doing, but some of them that are more hobby-based or, or ones that, you know, are doing, you know, like, simple civic duty practices that don't actually affect the policy decisions in the city. An example of that is the Board of Health, right? The appointment process that we have for the Board of Health is not sufficient. And, and I'm so thankful for the folks that we have on the Board of Health. But God forbid, we just had a rubber-stamped process or forty-five days lapsed and we had folks who were on that committee that couldn't have helped us get through the pandemic, right? The Planning Board is another entity that really fundamentally alters the way that our city works. So we need to talk about concepts of stratification, weighing which ones need to have a more vetted process. Because I think at the end of the day, it makes us better decision-makers for, for some of these committees. And I don't know what those answers are, but I, I need folks to help me come to a consensus on how we do that. So that's all. Thank you.
Any other councilors? I will say that, I don't know if this is my sixth year as a councilor, but in my six years, I've been serving in the Appointment Committee for six years. I don't know if any other member of this body served six years in Appointments Committee. First, when Counselor Zaret and I, we start talking about the sixty days, for me, makes sense because those issues that Counselor Riley are talking about. After talking to Counselor Denham, I see that there was a little problematic because the only job that we have in, in our side is to reject an appointment. As soon as the mayors of the city, Counselor President, appoint someone, basically that person is appointed. At least we reject it. I think with the changing the wording of the first received by the council, I think we solved that issue. Because now we're going to receive it in, 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 in a month like December. Probably we can review in three, in three minutes. Now we're going to have the opportunity to review all those, those appointments in three minutes because now we're going to have enough time to review those appointments. And I think that will resolve a lot of the problems that you are talking about. That's why the reason I'm in favor of this and keep it forty-five days, but moving the, using the language to when we, the council first received the, the appointment notification. That's, that's why I'm in favor. I need to open it for the public, is to publish hearing, anyone from the public? They have any comment or questions about this particular issue that we are talking about, the Home Rule Charter, section two ten? Lindsay?
I just, I would like to stand by Counselor Riley in this.
For the record, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, Lindsay Mailer, Ten Mother Street. And I do also agree that there's a lot of fundamental issues with how we do our appointment processing right now. And, and that's just from my perspective of handling them in a work aspect. I know Barb does a really great job at handling the active query and helping keep me on my toes for reappointments. I owe Counselor Denham some work on applications as well in revising language on applications. I don't know what the solution is for the appointment process, but I do recognize that there are many flaws in it right now. And I would like to just offer my support and help in any process changes that could make it run more smoothly.
Thank you, Lindsay. Anyone else? Seeing none. Counselor Rest?
Just a point of clarification for the clerk, Barbara. I'm going to add the word transmitted to the mayor and state legislature because this is a legislative act proposal and it must have concurrent approval from the mayor.
It always goes, yeah.
But I wanted to put it in the motion, if that's all right.
Yep. I move that the City Council approve the recommended amendments to the Home Rule Charter, Article Two, Section Two Ten, Council Review of Certain Appointments as made available at the May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. And the amendments, including the proposed special act wording, be transmitted to the mayor and the state legislature for review and approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the proposed change of the Home Charter Rule, Home Rule Charter, section two ten, Council Review of Certain Appointments. Any further discussion? Seeing none. For those one in favor?
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Anyone against? No? Motion passes. Counselor Rest?
The next is a rather complicated change in three nine. It completely is revamped because we now have a four-year term for the mayor. A vacancy in the mayor's office would create a number of problems, but one of the things is, do we want to have a number of different elections occur? I want to thank Barbara because she looked at a lot of different charters. I started with North Hampton when I proposed this. They are completely complicated. And we got to a point where she and, and the committee and the city attorney especially felt that this change that we are presenting this evening is clear, clearer and less complicated. It does two major things. It limits the amount of special elections necessary, which are costly. The first and third years of a term is when a special election would be necessary. We provided a hundred and twenty days rather than ninety so that there would be time for the nomination processes, the papers, everything you have to do in the scheduling. Also, this was made a comment in the event of a death, God forbid. We didn't want to just rush to have an election immediately. So a hundred and twenty days was thought a better time. But that would only occur in the first and third. During that time period, the president of the council would be the acting mayor, but would not lose their position on the council. Even if that acting mayor chose to run in that special election, they would still maintain their position on the council. They would simply not be able to vote. And only, and I think we said in the case of ties. The second and fourth year, there would not be a special election because we have an election, and the current charter actually does this, too. There would be nine months until the election. So if it happened on January second of the second or fourth year, the president of the council or, and this is important, and I want to backtrack a little bit. The council could select someone else if the president, the current president of the council says, "Look, I have a full-time job and I can't do this job. I, I need to recuse myself from being the acting mayor." So the council, somebody wants to do it, they raise their hands. I, I don't know, but that's the situation that could happen in both situations. It's important to also note that there are provisions in this that were existing in the previous charter that you know now that the mayor cannot have another job. But the acting mayor can in this situation because they're not, we're not going to ask them to lose. We have a mayor right now that works eighty hours a week, probably, but an acting mayor may be able to do this at night, come in and sign papers and do the work. We don't know. But in any case, we can't force that person to lose their job, their full-time job, because they may not want to be mayor past that nine months. But they would have to resign from the council in the second or fourth year, the president of the council, who becomes the acting mayor. And, and we'd have to do the same thing we're doing now for the school committee. We'd have to present it. So really, we worked hard on this. We thought, we tried to think of every possible scenario. And if you look at the beautiful spreadsheet, thank Barbara, you can never retire, please. This council will be lost. The spreadsheet that Barbara put out. The spreadsheet that Barbara put out shows what would happen when, if we did something. So, and I want to also thank Counselor Peak, who, who was on our Charter Review Committee and really came in and helped us out with this as well. So it is complicated, but it was vetted quite well by the mayor. A lot of red lines, a lot of things, mostly clarification language. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
City Attorney.
See, I'm going to clarify that. Thank you. Yeah, you say mayor.
I meant the city attorney. Yes, the mayor, the mayor did indicate approval of this, by the way, and the other one, but we still have to have her sign it.
Any councilor have any questions or comments?
Nothing.
Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Counselor Rest?
Wow, okay. This was the, that was a big one, I'm not surprised.
I move that the City Council approve the recommended amendments to the Home Rule Charter, Article Three, Section Three Nine, vacancy in the office of the mayor is made available on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. And the amendments, including the proposed special act wording, be transmitted to the mayor and state legislature for review and approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the proposed change to the Home Rule Charter, Section Three Nine, vacancy in office of the mayor. Any further discussion? Seeing none. For those one in favor?
Aye.
Anyone abstaining? Anyone against? No? Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
I will take a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. For those one in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? No distortion? Motion passes. We have a public speak time. We're going to use, we're going to do public speak time. If anyone have any objection, I want to move because we have a city employee. Probably he's been here since six AM. I want to move something for new business after the public here, uh, public speak time. So that way he can go home and take a, take rest and get dinner.
I was wondering why you were still here.
Anyone for the public? Counselors? Public speak time. Uh, this is the opportunity to address, uh, to the council regarding. This is the opportunity to address, to the council regarding any topic, not listed on the public hearing. Anyone for the public have anything to the council? Seeing none. Let's do new business. We have a resolution in support of the SRF grant application. Mr. Nuderman, can you explain this to the council?
So there's been some revisions to the lead and copper rule that we're required to comply with as operators of the city's public water system. In those revisions, we're required to inventory service line composition material on the homeowner's side of water services, every water service in the city, of which there's a little over 6,000. So my knowledge, there's no services in the city that are 100% lead anymore. However, there is a number of services out there that have a portion of them, just called a Guts Neck, that is made of lead. Our cards that we have that document the location and composition of every service in town don't necessarily call that out. So in the state size, as far as the regulation is concerned, we need to excavate a number of them, determine whether the lead material is present or not, and then, you know, work with homeowners to remove it. So there's going to be a significant cost associated with this, and the state has made some grant funding available through the state revolving, the drinking water state revolving fund to assist public water systems and complying with the new regulations. And part of the, one of the requirements for us to, to apply for the SRF grant funding is that I have approval from the city's governing body to do so. We're not applying for a loan, we're only applying for a grant. We're not going to borrow any money, but we want to make sure our application gets in while there's still a pot of money available to fund these requirements.
Thank you. Any counselor have any questions? Counsel Kacinski?
I heard you say 6,000. How many of those do you think will need to be excavated?
Well, it's hard to say.
We won't hold you to it.
Not every single, not every single one. We'll go through all of the, well, the consulting engineer that we'll bring on who can be successful in this grant application will go through each service card that we have on file and determine, you know, a number of, and renewed over the years. There's going to be a period of time, say probably from 1940 to early 1960s, that are going to be like the target that we would go after. It is really difficult for me to put a number to that, probably several hundred if I had to.
So we won't be doing this based on testing? It'll be based on likelihood of there being lead or a certain amount of lead in the service line? Could you describe just for us in the public, what is the service line and how far it extends?
So the service line, the city-owned portion of the service line extends from the water main in the street to about the property line of any, of any given property in town. And then the homeowner's portion of the service line extends from what we have, we call the curb stop right there, where we can shut the water off at the property line into the house, to the water meter.
So you'll be going to, examining from the water meter forward to the?
To the main in the street.
To the, to the shut-off in the street.
To the main, all the way to the main.
All the way to the main. Wow, that's quite the task.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty tough requirement for the state to put on public water systems and are, given the composition of our, our source water, our lead and copper numbers are extremely low. We only test, we only have to test for it once every three years. However, we do have to comply with the regulation as though our, you know, as though our numbers were higher, even though they're really very low.
Any other counselor? Seeing none, Counsel Darby.
I have authority to file a resolution, whereas the city of East Hampton, Mass., after thorough investigation, has determined that the work activity consisting of lead service line inventory and replacement plans is both in the public interest and necessary to protect the public health, and that to undertake this activity is necessary to apply for assistance. And whereas the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts pursuant to Chapter 21 and Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws of the Commonwealth, Chapter 21 and Chapter 29(c), are authorized to make loans and grants to municipalities for the purpose of funding and planning and construction activities relative to water pollution abatement projects and drinking water projects. And whereas the applicant has examined the provisions of the Act, Chapter 21 and Chapter 29(c), and believes it to be in the public interest to file a loan or grant application, now therefore be it resolved by the East Hampton City Council as follows. The East Hampton Director of Public Works is hereby authorized on behalf of the applicant to file applications and execute agreements for grant and/or loan assistance, as well as furnishing such information, data and documents pertaining to the applicant for grants and/or loans as may be required, and otherwise to act as the authorized representative of the applicant in connection with this application. That the purpose of said loans, grants, if awarded, shall be to fund planning activities. That if said award is made, the applicant agrees to pay those costs, which constitute the required applicant's share of the project cost.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the resolution in support of SRF grant application, lead and copper rule revisions. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Seeing no? Motion passes.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry to have to wait so long.
You're welcome. Good night.
Thank you, Greg. Communication from elected officials, boards and committees. Counsel Sarret.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick announcements. One, we spoke earlier about how inspiring the young people in our community are, just to take a brief timeout in case in which young people avoid inspiration, and that was the Breath of Fresh Air campaign that was organized by the Health and Youth Coalition that called on the young people of the city to create anti-vaping messages through posters, public service announcements and videos. That's going to be available soon. I had the opportunity to review them as one of the judges. It was really just great, again, seeing the, the leadership our young people are taking. As soon as that's available, I'll, I'll transmit it to you all. And then quickly, I, I just found out, as you all know, the city's been raising the pride flag since 2019, I believe, over the city. And this year, the collaboration with the LGBTQ Chamber of Commerce, there will be Event of 50 Pace next Thursday from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. with a flag racing at 5:30. There'll be music, refreshments and some other things. So please attend. And that's it.
Thank you, Counsel Sarret. Any other counselor? Counsel Riley?
Yeah, so this is just a, I guess, I guess it's an announcement, but I just want to remind the council that for many years now, this predates me being on the council, there have been numerous complaints from residents at the East Hampton Housing Authority about the treatment and the conduct of the staff members at that organization, as well as members of the Board of Directors. I think sometimes it's fair to wonder about the validity of a single complaint, but we are now talking 50, 60, 70 people over the last few years who, who are saying the same types of things. And we've seen them come in multiple times. And there's a gentleman who lives in that community development, who was here earlier, did not get a chance to speak during public speak time. And I just want to remind the council that this is an ongoing problem that has not seen enough public momentum to support them, and that should we ever fall on any financial hardships in our lives, we are going to be just like them in the next 20 or 30 years. Some of us, in the next five to 10 years easily, could end up in a situation like that. And there is a level of dignity and respect that all of our residents in East Hampton are entitled to. And it breaks my heart that I hear this week after week after week, and to know that it's been going on for years and nothing has happened. I, I would like to see some sort of collaboration among members in the community in the same way that we collaborated to save the school budget last year. I think that this rises to a level, in my opinion, as a person and from the things that I have heard, that could potentially be as serious as what happened at the Holy Oak Soldiers' Home. And I don't want to see a situation where senior citizens are being mistreated, or at the very least, not even heard or listened to. And I feel like they have been screaming this for years, and I don't think that they're being heard in the way that they should. When I am 60 to 70 years old and I'm in their situation, I hope to God that there are people in positions of power and influence in our community that would stick up for me when I feel like nobody's listening to me. So that's all that I'm asking. This is an ongoing problem that does not seem to be going away, and I hope that we can all come together and, and find a solution here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Any other counselor? Seeing none, mayors communication, mayors not here tonight. Correspondent announcement from the president and the vice president. Do you have anything? I do have two announcements. One is we're going to have an especial meeting, the June 21st at 6:00 p.m. At the chambers, we're going to see potentials supplemental appropriations in the near future. And because it's going to be the end of the year, we have to schedule that meeting. The meeting on June 6th, I think it's June 6th, June 7?
June 7.
June 7th. We are going to have at the end of the meeting a secret session, so I just want to remind everybody to be ready for that. And that will be it for my communications. Report of standing committee, finance, Counsel Artest.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three more budget hearings. They are scheduled May 22nd, which is education, debt and interest, unclassified insurances. May 24th, that's a week from today, edu, revenue, general government and CPA. And on May 30th, not the 31st, the 30th is a final finance votes. Also, the items that are going to be in new business will be dealt with on May 30th. Barbara, I promise to send those agendas to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
That concludes, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Artest. Public safety, Counsel Sarret.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a meeting scheduled next Thursday, the 25th at 6:00 p.m., I believe, in Room B. There are a number of items on the agenda. We mostly need to do some housekeeping to probably discuss if those will stay on or be removed until they're relevant again. And there will not be, that's, that's the main purpose of that meeting, so that concludes.
We have three, two with tender.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. You're eagle, I appreciate your, your attention to detail. At this time, I'd like to take votes to extend by 30 days the review of South Main four-way traffic light, the electric speed monitoring signs and the new city quick actions, 30 days for each of those in a formal motion.
We have a motion and a second to extend those three items for 30 days. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor.
Aye.
Anyone against? Abstention? Motion passes. Counsel Sarret.
Uh, that concludes.
Thank you, Counsel Sarret. Appointment, Counsel Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first, a brief clarification. This is a mistake that I made in the first meeting that we held with four members. And so that clarification is that when I held that first meeting, I was allowing votes for all four members of the committee, and it came to my attention afterwards that alternate members on our committees may only vote in the absence of one of the other three members. So I just wanted to clarify that on the record, that was my mistake. Going forward, votes will be in totals of three. So yeah, I just wanted that to be on the record.
That's the way to meet forward.
Yeah, I know. They were wonderful votes. So the appointment committee last met on May 11th to discuss two mayoral appointments. The first appointment was Veronica France Eggleston to the Nashawonic Pond Committee. So prior to the meeting, I spoke with many members of the Nashawonic Pond Committee. In fact, they actually reached out to me personally to express praise for Veronica and that they were excited for her to join the committee and to get to work. So in addition to her love of the pond and all of the waterways that are in East Hampton and wanting to protect it, the committee had identified some much-needed work around communication, social media and advertising as work that still needs to be done on behalf of the committee. Should we appoint Veronica today, that is work that she will be assisting them. So just to clarify, the committee voted 3-0 to recommend her appointment, and unless there are any questions or comments, I would move to appoint Veronica France Eggleston to the Nashawonic Pond Committee with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the mayoral, Counsel. We have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of, of mayoral appointment. Any further discussion? Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. And next, we discussed the appointment of Counselor Owen Zarrett to the newly-formed Biodiversity, Environment and Ecological Sustainability Committee, colloquially known as the Bs Committee. We had a fruitful discussion about the formation of the committee and the type of work that can be done in this committee to contribute to our city's governance. I don't feel like I need to go on too much about this. I mean, we've had multiple meetings where we've discussed what the intent of this committee is. There are a couple of details that I want to point out for both the council and for the public. So typically, elected compensated officials who are like city counselors cannot serve on appointed, non-compensated committees. There's typically, there's, there's an ethical concern there. However, when this committee was designed, it was comprised of positions and not people. One of those positions is a city counselor, so that this voids that, that conflict of interest. And then further, the expiration date for this appointment is just in a few months. It's December 31st, 2023. And the reason for that is because the appointment belongs to a city council seat, not an individual who happens to be a city counselor. Our term ends December 31st, 2023. So therefore, all people that would be sitting in this seat would, would have to relinquish it. And then, you know, should they get reelected, then I think, you know, we can cross that bridge when we get there. So I just wanted to provide that clarification. And then, you know, again, unless there are any questions, I move to appoint Owen Zarrett to the Biodiversity, Environment and Ecological Sustainability Committee with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Owen Zarrett to the Bs Committee. Any further discussion? Counsel Sarret.
Just really quickly, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank the committee for their time and some of the kind words that were relayed to me. I just wanted to say again, I said in the meeting that in designing this ordinance and the intentions of this committee, I didn't have any presumptions that I would be the counselor to sit on it. Certainly, I wanted to, but I wanted to make sure that, that because of the, some of the legislative, potential legislative work that would be designed to the committee, that there was a counselor. And I'm appreciative that my, to the president for his faith in me and recommending me and so, but I just wanted to make it clear that I, I wanted to make sure that was open to anybody, so, but thank you.
Any other counselor? Seeing none, for those who are in favor.
Aye.
Anyone against? Abstention? Motion passes.
Okay. And then lastly, there are no more agenda items before the appointment committee, and there are none in new business. So until new business comes before the appointment committee, we will not be meeting. And then that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Riley. Ordinance, Counsel Darby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to start off with housekeeping. Let's, in the form of a motion, I would like to extend Section 6-23, civilian traffic control monitors, LED sign and classification and pay plan, 30 days, please.
July.
Yeah, oh, I mean, just, okay, I guess if I don't need to, I, we only have, oh, no, we have a second meeting in June.
Yeah, expire in July.
Okay. Oh, oh, my bad. Then I'll get started. We met on May 9th, and we were able to move some of these items out of our committee. So we do have the civilian traffic control monitors. We voted that out of committee, 2 to 0, and I would like to set a public hearing for that at our next meeting, which is June 7th, 6:15? that at our next meeting, which is June 7th, 6:15, in these chambers.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing for the TCO, June 7th at 6:15 in the chambers. Any further discussion? Seeing none. For those who are in favor?
Aye.
Anyone abstain? Against? Motion passes.
And we also voted 2 to 0 to move City Ordinances, Chapter 7, Classification and Pay Plan, Exhibit A, adding a data collector for public hearing, in the form of a motion, like to set a public hearing for June 7th, 6:15.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to schedule a public hearing, June 7th at 6:15 in the chambers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Abstention. Motion passes.
And the work that we did in committee regarding the electronic messaging center and LED sign, we came up with a modification to the zoning ordinance. And so I would like to, we moved 2 to 0 to move that back to the Ordinance Committee and to the Planning Board, since it's a zoning ordinance which needs review by both. And I would make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to move the item to the Planning Board and the Ordinance Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Abstention? No, motion passes.
And right now, we don't have a meeting set, but depending, my schedule is a little fluid, so I think depending on that, we should be meeting the week of the 22nd, but we will post that when we can confirm.
Thank you, Counselor. Property, Counselor Kuzinski.
Having dealt with the elementary school reuse recommendation, our park schedule is clear, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Rules, Counselor Rist.
Yes, we do have a new rule, a rule amendment we are presenting this evening. You all may remember that the Supreme Judicial Court ruling makes it illegal for a public body to restrict public comment even when it might be highly critical or even hateful. Let me repeat that. Even hateful. If someone comes in the room and makes a comment towards an individual councillor that is hateful, that is homophobic, racist, ethnic slurs, we have to take it. We have to live with that. I don't like it at all, but that is the mod, that is what free speech means. And that's what the Supreme Judicial Court did in their ruling. And all, I attended a webinar on what can we do to help keep potential disruptive public comment? And the only thing that they brought up is that we can do it through procedure. So the new rule that Counselor President Gomez brought in, we modified it to try and make it a little more specific towards how long can comment be, and the fact that the President can even restrict comment, repeating for the public that open meeting law does not require public comment. So we can make a rule that says comment can be one minute, two minutes, three minutes, whatever the President feels is appropriate. We only have to hope that the President could read the room and decide, oh, we better keep this to a minute, because if someone comes in with those kinds of comments, all we have can do is have a thick skin and grin and bear it. And that's going to happen to us online, everywhere. And it's unfortunate. In the society we're living in today, we, hate speech, we have rights too as individuals, but we also decided to be elected as public servants. Makes it really hard to be public servants when you hear some of the crap that's out there. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for putting up with this, but this is very revealing, this new judicial ruling. It's always been there, but they slammed that city. You can't stop people from yelling at you. They come in and they want to make a comment, they have to. So the new rule, the new rule that I present this evening, thank you, President Gomez, for bringing it, is a little more specific to that. The only time we can stop hate speech is if there's a threat to commit a crime, a threat of violence. It's the only time the President could gavel the person. Okay? It's unfortunate, but that's the society we live in, so. I don't know how, I'll try to answer comments, but I don't think there's anything else we can do. We can't, we can't restrict public comment speech, even though we say, please talk to the councillor. If that person wants to say to Dan Ristier or whatever, they can do that.
Counselor Derby.
So Counselor Rist, if, does that include, do chairs, the President, have the ability to, in the moment, limit the amount of time the person speaking has? So if someone starts a tirade, they can say, I'm going to end public speak for this meeting? Or I'm going to change this to one minute? Or less, or 30 seconds? Is there, is there a way to be responsive and fluid in the moment?
My statement is no. You make a procedure at the beginning of, like President Gomez does, we'll have public comment today because we have a lot of business, it's going to be one minute. You can't all of a sudden make it 30 seconds because that person. If, I don't believe you should do that. I don't know how you can do that.
Could you tourniquet public comment? Like, just to say, we're not, we're, for the remainder of the meeting, we're not going to entertain any more public comment.
Sally? No.
No, I don't believe so.
Sally, no. Counselor Riley.
Yeah, so, you know, we actually had a pretty in-depth conversation about this. I don't know if you all know, but I serve on the Board of Directors of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and.
That's what did the work.
Okay. Is that, that was the training that you went through? Perfect. Okay, good. I'm glad that, I'm glad that folks are going to them. Yeah, so really what we're talking about here is, you know, what is the proximal cause of changing the rules? So if, if somebody is engaging in that kind of behavior and you change the rules that essentially says, we're either going to close public hearing, or we're going to limit the amount of time that people can speak, it's because it would be connected, the proximal cause would be connected to the person who is engaging in that sort of hate speech, and therefore, their ability to speak and any future people in public speak time that want to speak would not be entitled to the same level of public speak for the folks prior to the, you know what I mean? So that's really where the challenge comes in, is, yeah.
I, I think the answer is kind of simple, and probably we don't like the answer, because they will allow, if someone is nasty, we'll have three minutes. But as soon as we set up the rules for that particular meeting, it's a rule for everybody.
Right.
We cannot limit, we cannot give you three minutes for, oh, my Gomez, and because I know you're going to be nasty to Puerto Ricans, I will give you 30 seconds.
Right, right.
So you have the same opportunity of the older member to talk for three minutes. And if they're talking about Puerto Ricans, you have to have the skin to tolerate that. Counselor Derby.
I just want to be clear. So does this apply specifically to public speak time?
Yes.
And I guess the clarification I'm looking for is, if we're discussing an item in committee, and we allow people to comment, but it's not public speak time, it's just, we're generously, which we don't have to do, just saying, would you like to participate? Does this hold this, because generally, those are a little bit less structured, so I just want to make sure.
Let me, let me clarify a few things. First, yes, the rules for this and for the committees. Something that we do, because those committee meetings that we have are kind of flexible, and it's not that many people, we allow the people to participate, but by rules, and by rubber rules, the only opportunity that the public have to participate in a public speak time after that is just the members. And it's up to the chair to allow people to talk or not. But if, my recommendation is, if you're going to allow public to participate every single meeting, I think that will be problematic, because now that people will have the, that will have the permission basically to say whatever they want at that moment, too. Because it's going to be kind of public speak time, too, when they are not part of the agenda. My recommendation in the future, just keep it to the member of the, of the committee, and just allow them to participate at the public speak time. Counselor Rist.
Just, we have a rule that says the committee should follow the same agenda procedure. We are flexible in that, but I think, just to echo what Counselor Gomez, President Gomez said, public comment, we don't go back and forth with it because it might not be on the agenda. If you want to turn your agenda item into a public hearing in which you're answering questions of the public, that's your right as chair. But once you open that door, you can't all of a sudden close it because you don't like what somebody's saying.
Right.
That's all I'm saying. You have to be fair. But if you stick to public comment, and they want to say, I don't like this budget for this whatever in my meeting, they can make that comment. But I'm not going to open it up because of this new thought process. And because of the times we're in, I am, for the rest of my tenure on Finance Committee, I am only going to have public comment when there's public comment. And then we're going to stay in committee and with staff, because that's safer.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselor? Counselor Kuzinski, and then Counselor Sarret.
Mr. President, I think, I'm not sure it was mentioned, but we've been talking about individuals talking and saying, okay, everybody has a minute to speak, or three minutes, or two minutes. But we can also limit the total time to speak. Say, we will have no more than 10 minutes of public speak today, and everyone will have a minute, or 20 minutes, or 15, if I have this correct. So that is the prerogative of the chair or the President to go ahead and make that determination at the beginning of the meeting. This is all so that we all can be fair to everyone out there, so that everyone who may not agree with you, or me, or anybody else that sits here, has the right to feel that they should be heard, and they should be heard. And sometimes when people don't get heard, they get angry, and they raise their voices, and they get mad. And they might say things that we don't like or isn't to our like, our opinions. And that's fine, and that's why the judge ruled, go ahead, we have to listen to whatever someone has to say. Because someone was gavelled out of a room, I believe, and the police were asked to remove the person. Okay, why? Because they disagreed with the councillor? No, that's not right. I think that the court may have gone a little too far in saying that everybody, somebody can say anything, hate speech. Frankly, I don't think that's right. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's the way we should be. And I think in the interim, until the courts resolve this on their own, our job is to rise above it. Our job is to be calm and have presence throughout the entire process. And by the Lord, that is not easy. And it, I caution anyone who's thinking of running, that is a major, a major component, I hope, of your composition. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski, and Counselor Sarret.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, that I have in concurrence with the opinion about committees, that they should, we should be mindful about how we structure public speak time there and to shed, to mirror what we do within the council meetings. Quick question. I know we've had this conversation before regarding public hearings, and that question should be relevant to the question, to the matter at hand. Does this opinion change anything, or is that because of the nature of that?
That's a great question, and the answer is, the, when in a public hearing, the person's supposed to only talk about what is in the public hearing, but they can use bad words.
Sure.
So, and they can be nasty if they believe that they, they need to be nasty to us. I just want to clarify that. So basically, the change of the rule is because people can say whatever they want, and that includes public hearing. People can say whatever they want, and the public hearing has to be related to what we have the public hearing, but they can use bad words, they can use racist stuff, they can, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that people should use it. I just say that they can. That's allowed by the Supreme Court of Massachusetts, the rule that they are allowed to do.
So as a follow-up, Mr. Chair, if that's okay. So you, as the chair, in a public hearing, can redirect to stay on topic regarding?
Correct, yeah. Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Rist?
Yeah, just a couple of follow-ups. If the body out there is being disruptive, that's different.
Different.
The President, at one time this year, gavelled, somebody had the police escort that person out, because they're being disruptive for the whole thing. We have rules. One at a time, speak, go to the podium, state your address, et cetera. If there's a lot of people yelling and screaming, the President has the ability to clear the room, because that's disrupting a public body, which is against the law. But it's the individual comments that we can't restrict.
Thank you. Any other Counselor before we take, Counselor Derby?
And that was one of my questions, and it's Chapter 30A, Section 20G, and basically, a person will speak at the pleasure of the chair, but if they speak out of turn, then that, none of that applies.
Right.
And that, they can be tourniqueted. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was.
Thank you, Counselor Derby. Counselor Rist?
Oh, am I making a motion? I didn't know what you, if you want to.
I don't know why you looked at me.
Okay. I move the City Council amendment, Council, City Council rules by replacing the current Rule 5F, public comment, and it's entirely with the following new Rule 5F. Any member of the public may address the council during the public comment portion of the meeting. After being recognized by the chair, the person should state his name and address. I'd like to change that to their, just as a clerical thing, okay? I don't think we need to do an amendment or anything, but should state their name and address. Time allowed for each person will be at the discretion of the chair between one and three minutes. All remarks during this period should be made to the council as a whole. If comments are made to a specific member, the speech should be allowed unless it constitutes a threat to commit a crime. In order to avoid possible violation of open meeting laws, the council shall not engage in any dialogue regarding remarks made at public comment. That was a motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to amend City Council Rule, Rule 5F. Any further discussion? Counselor Kuzinski.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for the, a very educative discussion. I think that was very good, and anyone who's interested in understanding the process should take that clip and use it as a study guide.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski, and Counselor Sarret.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, just quickly, that the language doesn't, it doesn't necessarily address what Counselor Kuzinski brought up before in terms of total duration of public speak time, and whether that still can be set by the chair to say, for instance, we will have 30 minutes of public speak, one minute apiece, or if the language needs to reflect that or not. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Counselor Rist?
We discussed that in committee and felt it wasn't necessary, because the President already has that ability. And we as consulars, as chairs of committees, have that ability.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselor? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Abstention? Motion passes. Counselor Rist?
That concludes. Well, I wanted to say, for Counselor Zerrett's point, and for everybody who is interested in the resolution that Counselor Zerrett put forward, myself and Counselor Denham have 11 meetings in May. We have six council meetings, or five council meetings and six Finance Committee meetings, so we won't be having a rules meeting until June. So, and Counselor Zerrett graciously said he understood, so just want everybody to know I'm not going to pursue that resolution for a while. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. New business, don't have to go again. Counselor Rist, we have some supplemental appropriations to send to Finance and to schedule a public hearing.
I apologize, Mr. President. I'm tired. I'm very hungry, too. New business. I'm going to make these in the form of a motion at the end of reading them for the first reading. Supplemental appropriation, amount requested is $159,317.64 to be transferred from capital stabilization. $159,317.64 to be transferred to the police cruiser. The amount requested for the purpose of purchasing two new Ford Police Interceptor Utility AWD D Hybrid Cruisers at $79,658.82 each. The next is another supplemental appropriation of $159,323 to be transferred from capital stabilization. $159,323 to be transferred to financial software conversion. $159,323. The conversion of financial software to web-based version with updated software licenses, subscriptions, technical support. subscriptions, technical support, maintenance, and hosting. The last is a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $1 million to be transferred from Enterprise Retained Earnings, $1 million, to be transferred to the Union Street Enterprise Project, $1 million. The appropriation will provide funding for water and sewer improvements that are being completed as part of the Union Street Corridor Improvement Project. Mr. President, I move that these three aforementioned items be sent to the Finance Committee for review, and that a public hearing be set for the meeting on June 21st.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to send the three supplemental appropriations to the Finance Committee and to schedule a public hearing June 21st, at 6:15 in these chambers. Any further discussion? Consular Sarret.
Yes, I, in the spirit of Austin Powers, I was hoping that the Chair would have placed his pinky at the corner of his mouth when he said, $1 million. That's all, but maybe next time.
Any other Consular? Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Abstention. Motion passes, and we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adjourn, for those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Abstention. Now, motion passes. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.